All right, good evening. Thank you for being patient. We'll get started with our regular city council meeting. City Gilbert City Council Meeting for Tuesday, October 24th of 2023 at 6:15, 6:16 PM. Roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. You all here?
Yes.
Okay. Councillor Pottin?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Councillor Polis?
Here.
Councillor Skinsich?
Here.
Councillor Heitzman, the Assistant Attorney, Chief engineer, Operations Director, City Clerk, and the Administrator. And this three resisted.
Thank you. If you all please stand and join us in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I believe we have one addition for...
Your adjutant will be out of his hands for the offer as a visit.
And that's, yep, that information.
I'll move to add that to the agenda.
Moved by Councillor Polis.
With support.
Supported by Councillor Skinsich. Further discussion?
Are we going to move that to the top, though not at J, not at the bottom?
Yeah, we'll add it to J, but we'll bump it up for the first discussion.
Okay.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. None motion carries, four to zero.
I'll move, Bill Prue. Support.
Moved by Councillor Skinsich, supported by Councillor Polis. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. None motion carries, four to zero.
My name's Amanda Metta. I'm the labor representative for AFSMI and the union employees here with AFSMI. This is Tara Reinerson, President of the Union. And we are also here with the members of our local. And we're here today because in early December of 2022, the last hired permanent utility billing clerk left employment. The city failed to communicate on the hiring process or establish an internal or external posting at that time. And on February 15th, 2023, the union filed a grievance because the city refused to post the utility billing clerk job and job description for hire per the union agreement, instead choosing to file, or, excuse me, instead choosing to continue filling the position with a temporary posting. In response to our grievance, the employer agreed that they would meet and negotiate over changes to the job description for this position and the other administrative assistant position within the City Hall office as part of their planned reorganization. In April, the union and the employer met to resolve these issues. Together, we worked to revise the job descriptions for the positions, and we came to an agreement on the positions that would ultimately be posted and the changes we mutually agreed upon. We worked with the city even though it resulted in the layoff of one of our own members. These positions were posted as promised in May. However, the utility billing clerk position still has not been filled on a permanent basis, and the clerk's daughter continues to fill this position despite the fact that a qualified employee on layoff status was never recalled to the position once it was posted, and no communication has been provided to the union or the public on finalists. It is now October. We have waited patiently for eight months while we assumed that the city was working in good faith to find the staff necessary to fill the positions upon which we agreed. Instead, what the council is now apparently being asked to consider is yet another solution in search of a problem. We understand that management is now proposing amending the deputy clerk position, offering a new non-union employment contract to one of our own members without posting to the public or ever having made public a job description for this position. This lack of transparency and lack of communication with staff, with the union, and with the public is a key problem with the business of City Hall throughout the last year. We understand that the core intent of this new job description and new position is to make it supervisory in order to establish it as the supervisor for the utility billing clerk. This would remove duties from our union work that our union workforce has always performed and incorporate them into a supervisory position. This would pile duties onto the employee in this role, combining the administrative assistant and the deputy clerk and a new supervisory title, presumably resulting, again, another wage increase. It would also conveniently serve the clerk's interest in hiring her daughter without the appearance of a conflict of interest in supervision. And finally, it would serve the purpose that the clerk has repeatedly stated behind closed doors over the past year, attempting to remove the union from City Hall. We are aware that for many months, the clerk has engaged in illegal and unethical activity, committing unfair labor practices by inserting herself into union business, asking members why they are represented by AFSMI and not another union, and stating that the union should not represent positions within City Hall at all. We have also communicated this directly to the city attorney. This has never, or, the city has never had more than one person serve as supervisor for City Hall employees. And while this is certainly creative thinking to attempt to avoid a conflict of interest in the clerk's job description, it doesn't make sense, and it's not necessary. You do not need to rid City Hall of union positions in order to avoid conflicts. You simply need to avoid engaging in nepotism. It does not serve the city to create positions just so the clerk can engage in nepotism and further an anti-union agenda. Creating supervisors and reorganizing staff yet again is not the only way of filling the staffing void at City Hall. We know that there is a need to address the hours of work for the existing employees. Your new administrative assistant and our member has been working far above the post at 24-hour work week since hire, and we have an agreement in place to meet and discuss and review the needs of the city in November. Our union is here today to demand that the city keeps its mutual agreement to meet and discuss staffing in City Hall. We have a shared interest in ensuring that the city can retain consistent, qualified employees, and we know that those employees are interested in being covered by a union contract, by our contract. We ask that you follow our contract, that you keep bargaining unit work within our bargaining unit, and that you negotiate to the fullest extent possible. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I just make a comment?
Yes.
I just want to go on the record. As indicating that no one has ever communicated to me, nor have I ever engaged in any conversation that was anti-union or in an attempt to remove a union from the City Hall.
Is there any other public input? Moving on to the mayor and council reports, I have one. 'Tis the season of the flu and COVID and illnesses, so I don't know that the city has a policy or wants to look into one for, for the COVID illness, or just follow the CDC guidelines. I just thought I'd bring it up and, and for a discussion if... Any input on that, Attorney Lindsey?
Thank you, Mayor. Perhaps one of the things that we could do, I know that the city does have a COVID policy that was previously passed, and one of the things we may do is just refer it back to staff to, you know, for the next meeting, to look into the CDC guidelines and see if we need to amend or update that policy to cover new events or, or the changes that have occurred since the last time we had it in place.
Thank you. And that, Clerk Zoller, we can look into. I just wanted to bring it up with this time of year, the change of seasons, people get And that's all I have. Councillor Poten?
Yeah, I was, I met, I was at the Thursday meeting with the Water and Light Board, and they recommended along with myself that we set up a discussion with the city of McKinley and Fail Township for their water fee increases. And I don't know if the clerk would want to do that or for myself, but I need permission to go ahead and set up a meeting with them to increase their water fee. So I'm asking the council, in direction of Jill does it, I guess that's fine, but we need to get moving on this. They're under, they're underpaid for years for their water service. That's all I have. In what direction?
Do we want to approve them to go talk to McKinley? Would you be going with part of the member of the Water and Light Board?
Well, we'd like to set up a meeting here with them if they would attend, you know. And yeah, and the Water and Light Board would like to be, have a representative to, or maybe to, you know, to discuss this with them. So that's what we're looking at, to set up a meeting and, through the city, you know, backed by the city, yeah.
Jill, is that something you can do and then let us know when it's made to have a meeting with McKinley?
Yes, I can serve as help to their mayor, I guess is where we start with, and I can get some date all solidified there.
And also with Fail?
Okay.
And then we'll go from there?
Yeah. Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councillor Polis?
I don't have anything at this time.
Thank you. Councillor Skinsich?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Reports from staff, boards, and commissions. Fire chief is not present. City attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. No formal report, but I am happy to field questions if the council has any form.
Thank you. Chief Teacher?
Good morning, Mayor, Council. The only I have, sorry I'm not in uniform tonight, but the Lieutenant Tricano and myself were able to put a fire out before the fire department got there today, so I just want to make note that the PD saved another house in town, so...
You get no bonus.
So I had to go and shower and wash my uniforms because fire extinguisher made quite the mess, so everything else is, is on the agenda tonight, so later on, so if anything you have on me.
Thank you.
No. Thank you, and good, good work, and let Officer Tricano know that we heard about it, and we appreciate all she does as well.
Yeah, it's on body camera, so we have proof.
We've always said you're the best junior firefighter we have.
You might get your little plastic badge.
Good job, Ty. Good job, Chelsea.
Good job, thank you. City engineer, John?
Update on the approved plumbing project. We had the pre-construction meeting with Joel and Sop last week. They're scheduled to start about November 7th, so that's just the update there. They will be crossing the entrance, going to the Holiday, it's on Summit Street there, so as part of the open construction, so try to patch it up the best we can this time of year.
Yeah.
Just, thank you, that's all I had.
Thank you. Public works. Sam?
I don't have much. Just remember, alley pickup is next week. Brush under four feet, leaves and bags, and put them all Monday. We'll pick them up, come through all week picking them up. That's all I got, other than just kind of getting ready for winter around here, salt sand, getting all the buildings all ready, and it's kind of what we do, so.
Do we still have the G-Men dumpster, or is that project, that's done?
Yeah, that is done. I think I got rid of it last Wednesday or Thursday. I ended up getting, there was two of them that I ended up getting, so it wasn't used very much, but it was used a little bit, so.
Was there any stuff on the outside of it like last time, or no?
There's a few metal items, but that was about it, but nothing, nothing major like it was when we had it out there for a long time, and it wasn't...
No mattresses?
Yeah, well, I think there was one mattress in there, but I, you know, I think that was the last load, there was one mattress in there, and so, yeah, but...
So next time, we got to remember that.
No.
It's not a good, don't even do it to start. It doesn't pay. It gets abused, the longer you have it, the more it's abused. Anyway, that's...
Yeah.
That's all I got. Let's go, he's got something else for me.
No, thank you. And we don't have Wendy on? Is Sue online?
No.
No library? Advisory boards?
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Just wanted to give you a quick update on the implementation of the new campground reservation system. So far, I've spent about 10 hours' worth of volunteer work to do a number of different things. We do have, the map has been imported, we have about 50% of the photos have been uploaded, and we have the basic campsite information, so how long, how, how many feet the site is, water, sewer, what types of electric. That has all been included. I do have a demo that you can see. I'll stick around until after the meeting if you want to take a look at it to see what it's looking like, but we're making steady progress. Our next campground board meeting is on November 1st, 5 o'clock, at which we'll be discussing the rates. We had a start of a conversation at our last meeting. We'll continue that. Hopefully, we'll be able to make a recommendation to you soon. The rates do need to be put in the system before it goes live. We will have a discussion on some of the policies. We've had a chance to go through all of the campground policies, make some tweaks, make some edits, mostly changing the flow of where they, where they are so that the customers, as they're going through, they have checkboxes to affirm that they, that they have read and acknowledged certain policies. For example, pets is a big one, firewood is another one. I will be meeting with Jill as far as the credit card processor information. We have two or three different choices. They're basically the same prices, but they do different, they respond differently. One brings the money into the city faster than the other. There are minor percentage differences for the charges that we, that we get, so we have to have that meeting yet. And then we have some, some minor business rules that we have to set up in order for the system to function properly, so all of those will probably be done within the next couple of weeks. And then also at the same time, we'll be working on doing the customer data import from the current system into the new system, so all of the past customer records will be imported into the new system, so it should be seamless to customers. And then the last step will be then to basically get a report and a data file of all of the future reservations that are already booked for next season and get that properly imported and tested to make sure that that's all going to be current. So there is a fair amount of work left to be done, but we've made some good progress. And I would expect that probably mid-December, we should be ready to literally turn the switch so that come whatever date in January, it should be able to be up and running. So if you have any questions.
Will Wendy have the training necessary for that transition?
So we can certainly go through that over the phone. She will have training tools available to her. You know, she can go ahead and get that, that's, I guess, that's one of the things that we'll have to have a conversation about, is like what is going to be needed for the interim from January until she gets on site versus there's a different level of training that she'll need once she's on site. So we'll have to, we'll have to talk through that, but that's, there's no reason why she wouldn't have the information she would need to do her functions.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
I was finally able to obtain a copy of the charter from Attorney Lindsey. We will, I'm waiting for some dates from him so we can set our November meeting to go over the copy of the charter and meet with him to discuss any changes we have. I did put on everybody's seat, my last council meeting, Councillor Heitzman had asked about just some general information about what was changed so you guys could decide whether a special election was needed or not. It's pretty basic, but I did give it to you, kind of gives you an idea of changes we made. If you have any questions, we're happy to field those questions. There was a discussion at the last council meeting about individuals' ability to serve on more than one board commission. Paul actually found that there isn't existing city ordinance, 31.20, that addresses that. That's where it states that we can't sit on more than one board commission, so I don't know that we need to put that in the charter. The city can, you know, council can make those revisions to that ordinance as they
So on that, Brian, can we just change the ordinance then to allow people to be on more than one board? Or a resolution, would a resolution do it?
No. In order to alter the ordinance, you would have to have an ordinance.
Okay, so maybe we can move forward on that, and then we don't have to deal with it in the charter? Just a suggestion at some point here.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's a good idea because it's getting harder and harder to find people to volunteer for the boards, and life gets busy, and I understand it, so. Appreciate Paul, all the work you've done with the campground, thank you. And Tanya for the charter, and both of you on the charter, thank you for the work you You guys have any further questions with them, too?
No, thank you.
Clerk Zoller?
Thank you, Mayor. And we'll start off with a financial update, which we work with Civic to, I'm getting a, and I personally, I'm part of all of them, so we're just kind of waiting on Civic, I'm getting some training and working into that report, giving us all the speed as I'll be learning the full utilities, or actually, the full process that's had to head down, so obviously down that as well as we transition into her being gone and working with areas we work from there. Currently, in checking less outstanding checks, we have $892,628.61. Campground after the descent to jet approval will have $106,479.91. Again, as I stated, I would like approval if we could, if we go ahead and reach out to Civic to look into training for learning people how stable and those types of the jobs, and we'll need to know how they did their month end and those types of things that I didn't previously do. So if I could get your support and have me be brought up to speed for that.
I didn't hear that.
She needs to reach out to Civic to get more training?
She needed us to do something?
To allow her to get that training, it's going to be at a cost.
Yeah. How much?
I'm not sure. Jill, do you know how much that training's going to be?
Yeah, it's $150 an hour, so depends on how quickly I can pick up on it, and they'll do it just by how many hours we actually need. I know the majority are ready for the month end, so I don't expect any more than a couple hours.
I'll move.
Moved by Councillor Polis?
I'll second.
Supported by Councillor Poten. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. None motion carries, four to zero.
I also have some cubicles online that are free, and I would just like the helpful support in picking those up. They do have a total of six of them, I believe a couple in the office are getting run down, and some are movable for how we need to set up for our processes to be efficient. Randy, our IT is willing to take them down, we just need help with somebody transporting them here. I will send, let a couple of workers in to drag them there again, we're going to Virginia. And again, they're free, so, you know, can't, can't pass them up if there's no dollar mold for them.
Yeah, let me know.
Let me know.
I don't know if I actually need a mold or anything, I just kind of, like, you know, I did find some that were for free.
It's free, I don't think so.
Yeah, yeah.
Brian, do we need a motion on that?
Yes, we should.
We do? All right, I'll move.
Moved by Councillor Polis?
I'll support.
Supported by Councillor Skinsich. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. None motion carries, four to zero. Yeah, Sam, just work with her and...
Yeah. We need a helper, or whatever, some box from, from the...
Perfect. Thank you.
My last item is, you know, I'm suffering here all by myself, but I do need that for the secretary, which is, for instance, if I would think that we would be able to add Mary in that secretary. Julie, I think we completely done yours from there, from town, but I still need a secondary person to help us out in case among the office. And it will be on late until we have, you know, further approval, being we know she's expected position based off of the contract. I don't know if we want to hurt that, but we do need to have a secondary person eventually here.
I agree, and I think we'll wait on that until we can get these positions ironed out and how we're going to proceed with that.
That's all I got.
Perfect, thank you. Old business. Sam, with the wastewater treatment plant, their water treatment plant updates?
Yes, I got one for the sewer plant, wastewater treatment plant. We were able to get rid of all the sludge in the tanks, and we had Magni on site, they went down. I know I mentioned to council, I think it was a couple meetings ago, about the decan arms, and they were seized up and whatnot. So we went down and found out that, yeah, there was aluminum decan arms in those tanks, they should have probably been stainless. So ScanTech kind of gave a preliminary cost of, of a fix, and we were kind of working on one here. For the decan arms and tanks, three and four, they came up with, I believe it's about a $19,000 cost to, to put a steel davit crane base in each tank, and then they also would put a stationary 90-degree pipe that, that comes off of where the decan arm and pipe go up, but they figured total cost approximately would be about $19,000 for that. I know, we just came up with this, I didn't get a chance to get it to Jill, to get it on the agenda, so I figured we could put it under, under wastewater treatment facility. They, they said, you know, this was based on, on, you know, previous share costings for stuff. They were thinking 25% share on, on the ScanTech side and 75 on, on, on the city side would be a share cost with that. I'm not comfortable with that. You know, I, I really think ScanTech should have more in the game than...
Who decided the aluminum arm?
I guess that was a conversation between ScanTech and Magni that they, that they did the aluminum ones version. the aluminum ones versus the stainless.
And that poses issues.
Yeah, they didn't charge us though for the stainless, they charged us for the aluminum one. Stainless at the time, I think I mentioned it before, was roughly about a $10,000 piece. The aluminum ones were $2,500 a piece. So, you know, I don't know, that's where, I don't know how we move forward with this unless we don't know the cost share. But the other thing we're dealing with is, is we're wasting into those tanks daily, so I don't, I guess, I guess we could wait till the next meeting, get more information on the cost share before we, I think that would be the best, best alternative for this. But, like I say, I wanted to bring it forward, forward to council. I think there'll be still time to, to, at the next meeting, bring it forward, have it spelled out a little bit better, and then have a better cost share with, with ScanTech on replacement on this. So they're looking at a new base where the Davit cranes would go in tanks, those are the round tanks, those are three and four. And then, the same thing is happening in tanks one and two, and that's kind of that domed-covered, that square other building. So there's two de-can arms in there, we can't do a Davit crane hoist there, we would, we would be looking at installing the stainless steel swivel arms. Each one, they got a, they got another price of stainless steel one, and it would be about, what is it, about 75, or $7,869 for the 316 stainless steel six-inch. So it'd be about $15,738. Now, in conversation with Peter, he mentioned that ScanTech would possibly take all of that cost, but I want to have that confirmed through an email before we go forwards with anything.
Yeah.
Because I, I wouldn't feel comfortable, you know, telling you guys, let's go forward with it, and when we don't know who's gonna pay for it and the cost share. So, I'll just have us table this for, this meeting. I told Peter I'd bring it forward, see if we can get it passed, but I don't feel we should push it. Because I think we will have time to figure out the situation, so. Other than that, we're getting wrapped up down at the sewer plant, they worked all last week with the sludge press, they got a lot of all the, all the, the sludge out of, all the tanks pressed out, long hours, but we did that. What else? There's some other stuff Magni did in the tanks that were like warranty issue stuff, so we came into that. This week, or no, next week, we got Kubota coming to do our first CIP on these filters next week, so. That's about it on the, on the wastewater treatment facility.
Excellent.
Yeah, water plant, I don't know if you need me to talk on that, it's not really ongoing talks, design stuff, so trying to figure some stuff out with SCH, it's going good though on the water plant side.
So, I had a question on those cranes, how did you change those arms before? Why are there cranes needed now, how did you do it before?
Well, right now, we just kind of got a pump, we got a pump hanging over the side of the railing, and it's not the best, it would be really nice to have a, have a crane and it's a little bit safer. So we would, we would, what would happen is there's a 90-degree elbow come up with a pipe, then we just lower the pump down with this crane, and it's more of a base is what they're building, to bolt to the platform. Right now, we just kind of got them hanging off the handrails, which isn't the best, but, you know, we're getting by for now.
So, you're changing the stainless steel, those arms, right?
Uh, no, no, in tanks three and four, we wouldn't, we wouldn't change them, or we would, we would change them to a ductile iron, and then just, they would be stationary, and then we would just pump into them. Tanks one and two, we would change them to a stainless steel arm, so we would be able to operate them.
Because they deteriorated from the acid in the effluent, or what?
Yep, yeah, yeah.
And I'm surprised they didn't know that.
Well, they were, I mean, they were really deteriorated, I, you know...
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, there's acid in that, it's gonna eat away at stuff.
Yeah.
They should know that, that's what they get paid for, to know those kinds of things, but, yeah.
Yeah, I know. We could probably sit here and complain all day, but, I don't know.
Okay. Excellent. Anything else? No, thank you very much. On to new business, we are gonna jostle this around and we'll bring Mr. Wagner out, and we'll discuss the... I gotta find it here. Land purchase. The City of Gilbert land purchase from Ridge Inn Inc., letter of intent. Partial description number is 060-0052-01175. To catch everybody up to speed a little bit, it's, we're working with the DNR and Ridge Inn Inc. of the property that's behind the storage. DNR, there was a lease or easement agreement between the DNR and the City of Gilbert, the property was sold, and the DNR would like that property to extend or, because the corridor, the trail goes through the back portion of the property. So, the city, myself and Counselor Poten, have been talking with Brad Decker, who I sees on Zoom, and Mr. Wagner about how to acquire that property for the DNR. And this proposal is what RC came up with, for the city to purchase that 22 acres for $66,000. And so, if I understand right, RC, it's for $10,000 earnest money, $10,000 down, and then the city would have two years to come up with the $56,000 to pay off. Correct?
That's correct. Because we were, we were hoping that by that time the DNR would be ready to purchase this from the city, so they would pay you and then you could pay me.
Correct. The, the concern with the city is that the, so the price we pay for the $66,000, there's no guarantee that that, we're gonna get that from the DNR. They couldn't say yes, they couldn't say no. They can't predict what the assessment of the property is gonna be. So, but keep this moving forward, and please, Counselor Poten, if I get it wrong, please step in and correct me.
Just think, I'd, and the reason for this is the easement isn't there right now, because the ownership from RC took the easement away that the city had when we owned it. But when he purchased it, the easement went away, so the DNR has no easement to go through his property. So that's what we're trying to clear up, because he could, he could shut down that trail. He's got the right to do it, so we have to, in order to keep the trail open, if he wanted to, you know, he could do that, we need to purchase it so we can keep the trail open. Basically, that's one of the factors, you know. And, like you said though, Tom, we don't know what the DNR is gonna offer us, if we're gonna recoup that $66,000 or not. But in order to keep the campground having a trail access in Virginia, you know, also coming from, you know, we need to probably pay this in order to keep that trail open. That's, that's what we're looking at.
And Counselor Poten, the, the reason the city got involved, the DNR would like the 22 acres and would like the trails, of course, but they don't have the ability to do a purchase agreement, which would lock me into a sale with them, and it takes approximately two years, which is why I'm willing to, to wait for the money, for them to go through their appraisal process and their financing and, and all of that kind of a thing. So we don't have the ability just for the DNR to buy it from you and get the trail easements done quickly. So the ID came up, well, maybe the city could buy it, and then wait for the DNR to pursue the sale, the DNR said they could pursue a sale as soon as the city has the purchase agreement signed, and then wait the two years, approximately two years. I don't know if, I think Brad's on the phone.
Brad, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear us? Is this getting on you? Can you hear me?
Yep, yep. Are we on the right track with what we discussed?
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, like we talked about yesterday, DNR is definitely interested in acquiring those 22 acres of RC's and then also that roughly 30 acres for the West City of Gilbert land, two separate discussions. But, but just, the interest is there for sure, it's just that, that appraisal part of that, that, you know, we can't, the state can't enter and do a purchase agreement, say like the city could, and then, and then that discussion, that other thing we talked about yesterday as well, for us to start the appraisal process, the city would need a quick clean deed and just understanding that that's something that can be looked out between the city and RC.
Right.
This is the first I've seen this, so I'm kind of winging it here. So reading this, it's from the bike trail north, not including the bike trail?
Correct. Because, right, it doesn't...
There already is an easement for the bike trail on my property, and the DNR said we could give you a better, they could give the city a better price on the land in their appraisal if there were no encumbrances. Because I said, well, take the bike trail too, and the DNR said we'd be better off not to have the bike trail, because that's an encumbrance, and then when we're doing our appraisal, if an encumbrance shows up, we might not get as good a price, the city might not get as good a price for it.
It's all north of, it's all on the north side of that bike trail?
Correct.
It's none of it actually behind Holiday or alongside your storage units there?
No.
All behind.
All right.
All behind.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Yeah, it was the original purchase that we bought four years ago, I believe, that 42 acres. So it's just extended over the other side of the trail, that 22 acres is what we're talking about.
And then reading this, I guess a little bit, they're looking at putting out an entrance to the OHV trail, possibly through there somewhere? That's what their intention is, I guess?
No, it's not their intention to, that was in discussion, that that was a possibility because of the summit access.
Okay.
And RC said that he'd have no problem if they did that or decided to. DNR, I don't believe in their plans, has any plans of putting an access there, it's just in discussion that it could be possible because that infrastructure is there already.
Okay.
So right now, DNR wants it because they already have the existing trail through there, that they had the agreement with the City of Gilbert when they first made it. And the city sold the property, that avoided that easement agreement. So basically, that trail is non-existent, and the DNR explained that if they don't acquire the easement or that property, that part of the trail will go away, they'll close that corridor. So that's gonna shut off the access to the new expansion.
That'll sever that trail right on.
And then, and that was part of what the, you know, ATV Trail Board that I was on, that they don't want an entrance in, in Virginia, which in this case, they'd have to access it from Virginia then. So, it's sort of important, it's, the DNR...
And I think, I think the DNR mentioned that they spent $400,000 or something to do that trail, and they need to throw that away.
Right, right.
Didn't we just, we were just talking with the DNR about the land to the west of that also, just recently?
The 30 acres.
That 30 acres.
So that, they're working on that also, that could be part of their purchase later on. But we want to do this one first.
And there's that little chunk that, they do have an easement with, in agreement with the city to utilize that portion, so that's why the discussion...
All right. They prefer to own the property than to have easements through there.
I think we can recur our money back in the end, so I'll move on this.
Moved by Counselor Polis?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Seconded by Counselor Poten to approve the intent to purchase RC, or the purchase from the Ridge Inn Inc., the property parcel description. And RC, is this description for just that 22 acres, or is this sort of included, has it been broken up?
No, this is, this is the total parcel ID number.
Okay, so that...
That would need to be surveyed, I would assume, and a new parcel number assigned to it and that kind of thing.
Correct. So...
So all those other expenses will be done by the city?
It says that on the back.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Say, Brad, one question, you said that the DNR couldn't start their process, I think I heard you say until they have a deed?
Yeah, that was the question.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was one of the questions, RC, about, yesterday, one of the things that came up, one of our KLVR, person with the DNR that works on acquisition stuff.
Sure.
Wanted, for us to start all the stuff, all the appraisal, especially that appraisal process and everything else, the city would need to have that, you know, as legally concerned, and maybe Tom or Bob, I don't know, you could add to this, but the whole, having, having that deed, that quick clean would be sufficient. And then we also connected with that, if that's not something you guys can work out as far as the city taking that, and we talked about a couple of different options, not connected with you, RC, but a couple of different things that we could do as far as kind of getting the city working stuff, something out with them in the way of money. But, the main question for tonight from us was, or one of the main questions was, that question of hooking up, if you guys, whether it depends on, and whether the city would get a quick clean deed in part of this agreement.
So you understand what he was saying there, RC?
Yeah. Obviously, I'm a little uncomfortable giving the city a quick clean deed before I have my money, that's not, I'm not gonna get for two more years.
That's what the discussion was.
But, yeah.
Our attorney, if he writes out the purchase and...
Maybe there's something...
...to guarantee that they're getting the money, that's, that's the question.
Yeah, yeah.
And Brian could do that, because they need the, you know, the deed in order to move forward, but he also needs a promise that he's gonna get beyond that $10,000, he's gonna get the rest of his money. In order to get the deed, can we write up a purchase agreement to state that?
Well, so the answer to the question is, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn this off so we're not, he's squealing. The answer to the question is, it's actually, it's possible. Essentially, what we could do, if the, if the true intent of the agreement was to allow for a transfer of the property with a payment at a later date, the city could essentially execute a promissory notice.
Yeah, that's the word I was looking for.
And it would be... And it would be callable at a very specific time and we would, as a city, we would just have to be careful that we're, that we ensure that we have those funds available at that time because ultimately the city would be on the hook to pay that 66 if we weren't reimbursed by the DNR. So we want to be careful how we structured it, but I mean, we could essentially enter into a promissory note that would obligate us to pay at a given date.
Do you have to say where the monies are coming from in that promissory? Not?
No, it would be a general obligation of the city at that point.
Oh, okay.
That's what came to mind on that too, and I'd certainly be willing to cooperate if that helps the situation.
You hear what I mean?
Yes.
It's, that sort of arrangement is very, very common, though that's typically coupled with a mortgage, which gives teeth in the agreement to recoup the property in the event of non-payment. In this case, because they're looking for a quick claim deed, I trust that the DNR's not going to be interested in having a mortgage or a lien assigned to the property to guarantee it. So it's more secure because it's the city that would hold the obligation. It wouldn't be like, you know, talking to your neighbor, but you're not really sure how their finances operate or if they'd be good on the money. The city's very likely good on the money, but it would all, it would, there would be some inherent risk involved with saying, well, we'll pay it tomorrow or hamburger today.
Right, and that's what we appreciate.
I was impressed over the next couple of years, you guys do a good job around the city, so that they have some money.
Well, the other way to constructure is, the city could theoretically build into its budget, a couple of small payments over the two years, that would just be credited toward the purchase price. And then at the end, when it closes, assuming that the DNR follows through and buys it from the city, the city would just be reimbursed its funds at that point.
Right, right. Yeah, that's, we discussed that.
What, the angle we're trying to work in, in working with the DNR, we understand that it is a risk because we have to, the property has to be assessed and that's not necessarily going to be at the $66,000 mark, but.
What we thought we may make up for, if we're short on getting reimbursed the full amount, we may make up for it on selling that 30 acres. Hopefully, we can recoup any loss, you know, of the overpayment of 66, so that's, that's what we discussed. We're hoping that that will cover.
So you're hoping to sell one property to cover the loss of another?
If, if the loss even occurs.
Yeah, and it may, may.
We don't know.
That just seems like bad business to me, but.
Well, I know, but I mean, to make this work, in order to make this work, that was part of the discussion.
Are, are, my biggest concern that struck me in this conversation was that if we lose that corridor, that's going to affect our campground tremendously. Because that's what most campers are coming up, are the ATVers, and they like going out to that new expansion. It's not fully developed yet. If we lose that bloodline, our campground's going to be hurting. They're going to go elsewhere. Because all they're going to be able to access is the OHV park, that they've been there 20 years.
I hear what you're saying, but they can also go through FLS.
To get into that.
Yeah, the access goes either way. You can make a circle around here. I'm not, I'm not against this by any means, but it's, it's just very unsettling to guarantee Mr. Whiten or $66,000 when we don't know what the DNR is going to be giving or offering two years from now. Or I guess, when can you actually, when can we move forward with some sort of agreement with the DNR?
They're going to work on it as soon as we have the quick claim deed.
We have to have that for them to even make?
Yes.
Any sort of.
We can't have any type of lien or mortgage on it, they can't, they can't work with that. We have to have, what they explained was the quick claim deed in hand. Then they can start their process and it's going to be a two-year process. Because they have to have people come out and appraise the property, assess the value, and then they go through their, their people to determine, the, the interest is there, they say the money's there. It's just, the process takes two years.
So they've looked at this, is there additional things they're looking at doing on these 22 acres?
Trails.
Just more trails go through there?
Possibly.
Yeah, possibly more trails and.
I know that's what I think the other 30, whatever it was, they were looking at also.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'm just.
Very desirable from their standpoint, that whole part.
Right, yeah.
And that whole backside to, you know, future development.
There was one more little thing that we brought up. There's some properties that we own on the OHV park near Deep Lake that are, they lease from us, and there was a possible potential sale of those properties, which could bring some more income into the city. Because they're actually useless properties to the city. Because part of it's in the lake, part of it's under the dump, and, you know, they're mainly useless, but they were willing to look at possibly buying those properties also.
But none of those, those were just in discussion, none of that's on the table or anything.
I'm just filling in on the thing we talked about.
Yeah, that's, that's what we talked about at our meeting, but this, this is the pressing one that we need council action if, to proceed.
You have a motion. You had the motion already, right, Joe?
Yeah.
No, motion, second it, yeah. All in favor, say aye. You have something? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. None motion carries, four to zero.
And Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Because this, because this motion bears on the, the seller transfer of real estate, before the seller transfer could be completed, we'll have to reduce it to a resolution and have the resolution passed. But this, the, the motion acts essentially as a letter of intent, will create the resolution.
Resolution for the next council meeting. Perfect.
So nothing could proceed until the next council meeting as far as the purchase agreement? The payment can't be made until after the resolution, is that what you're saying?
Before the final closing of the transaction, we'll need a resolution by.
Oh, two years, two years from now?
Yeah, but we can start moving forward.
We can move forward, yeah, perfect, perfect. Excellent.
Great.
Thank you, RC.
Can Brad give you some information?
Thank you.
Great facility up there, RC, too.
Thank you. Hey, and on to the next parcel, lot 17. The dental office is looking for that additional lot that's right up next to Public Works where the storage bin is.
He says he's got some additional information.
Yeah, it should be in there.
There was a paper on it, all the additional cost needed in that container. That's going to get.
And then, from what I hear, the information I hear is so they can put a exit way, a ladder or stairway.
Stairway.
On that side of the building.
Sam, are you going to add your piece in there?
Yeah, I did some research on that if the council wants. You know, we got our storage building on that for the garbage bags and whatnot. I got a price to move that container. The price would be $2,250 to move that container. And that would be move it loaded. Now, if we had to move it ourselves, say, we would probably end up having to empty the whole thing out, dragging it with a couple loaders and whatnot. So just consider that if you're looking at selling that parcel, we do have that container on there and, you know, I think it'd be the best just to have somebody come in and move it. You know, so I did get a quote on that. There is, there is a spot, we could always put it down where our plows are, behind the ICO is kind of what I was thinking. The doors would face the alley so we didn't have good access to it and whatnot, but just a thought and a consideration. It's a cost that would probably come up, so.
Is that space, I mean, obviously, we have the storage there and that's, but is that encroaching on your, and Public Works' activity in that area? Because I know you guys park back there, it's going to be a cumbersome parkway for you guys working back there.
It's going to be, it's going to be difficult. It's going to be difficult no matter what. You're going to have probably six, seven employees' cars back there, or five employees' cars possibly back there.
City or who are you talking?
Well, just probably the dental office.
The business.
The business. And then now we got two dump trucks, loaders, everything we have, two, plus the employees' cars, you know, back there. So it's going to be a game of checkers most days, but the lot sale, if anything, it would be nice to just sell them what they need, if they need 10 feet, you know, for just a walkway, I, you know. But to keep that corridor so it's, you know, so if we have any issues, we can get to our building or any issues on that side, you know, if that's all they're looking for, I mean, could you do an easement or something so they can walk through that lot? I, I don't know. But yeah, it, it does encroach a little bit, but, you know, I don't know how big of a burden it is if they didn't, if you didn't sell it, you know? So.
And this is my opinion, I, I don't believe we should sell it. We need that little buffer between there, you know, it's tight spaces already. I don't know why they can't go onto the back or on the street side, you know, where that tree is. Maybe they could have their exit entrance there. That would be, I think, more beneficial to the city than having them tie up that side.
You know, maybe that's something we can meet with them, I don't know, Tom or anybody.
I think it'd be a good idea to.
Meet with them, see what they, they actually are planning and if it's something they, you know, we could work out with them or whatnot without selling it or, I don't know, just thought.
My, Mayor?
Yes.
My, my personal feelings on it is that little storage thing shouldn't be on the main street to begin with. That's business property. If the business that's putting up the structure wants to buy it, why would we not sell it? To me, that, it just makes, it doesn't make sense to, for the city to hold on to it because we have a container on there. And the idea is to attract businesses, if, if we're going to deep, try to push, push them or sway them, I guess might be a better way to say it, to, to change their mind or, I'm all about meeting with them and seeing about some different options, but I, I'm in favor, if that's what they want, there's nothing that's going to go in that 20, what is it, 25 feet? It's one lot there.
Yeah.
I, I don't think we should have that container there to begin with, personally.
I agree with you there.
I agree with you too, but.
Let's move the container and use it for parking for our employees or wherever.
So you want to, you want to take a business property and make it parking for the city?
It's not a business property, it's our property.
It's on the main street of Gilbert. It's, we don't have a lot of area, but that's, that's the business district, isn't it?
What are you, what are you saying? I'm just saying, don't, don't infringe on our city building. Just leave a buffer there and if the city employees, I, I agree, move that, that should have never been there, that trailer in the first place. But then the city could utilize it in some way, I don't know, park a dump truck in there at night or whatever, or whatever purpose they have.
So rather than.
At least they have access to it. Why, why wouldn't you just let them go off the street side with that, offer that to them? Then there would be no issues.
Actually, I think they own to the street. They have the property.
Then why don't we have the discussion, have the discussion and see?
That's right, I, I would, but as far as if that's what they want, I, I, my, my, my feeling on it is I'd say, yeah, I'm vote yes on this for myself.
Definitely not for a dollar.
I'm with Jeremy.
Definitely not for a dollar.
That's property taxes the city's going to get off of that 25 feet?
No, God.
Bob, you're infamous to saying, you know, a couple bucks more is a couple bucks more, isn't it?
Yeah. Well, I wish, I could wish you guys would have thought of that for the last four years.
Wow. We can go into that some other time.
Yeah.
But, no.
Good discussion, but yeah, I.
As far as talking with them, I, I think that's.
I think it's worth having a discussion with them because my feeling is I don't want Public Works encroach. We already gave them up a lot of space, but for a good cause, for the dental office to come in and build, but those guys don't have much room down there to maneuver all their heavy equipment and is that enough that they can utilize? I, probably not.
Or we got to start doing things differently down there?
Yeah.
You know, you don't want to push a business, you don't want to tell a business, we can't do that because we need room for a loader.
I agree, but here's how I look at it. When they designed it, you think they would have designed it to have those exits and entrances already planned.
Right.
Not, no, oh, geez, we screwed up, now we need that lot.
If you look at old pictures, the main street was lined with buildings here. There were no openings.
Right, right, and, and I get that, but I just trying to think of everything, these guys are being encroached, now we got to move it, yes, we have the space to put it, but then now we're going to, it's going to be a cluster down there.
So let's, let's just table it.
But let's, let's talk, let's have a meeting and see if we can work something out. And if it's, if we got a.
Don't want to do it, then.
Yeah.
Set up a discussion with them first and see if they're acceptable to move it to some corner, to the other corner, or to the back or corner, whatever.
We'll work with them, yes. They don't want this to hinder it, yeah.
Do you want to have a formal discussion with them or do you want to just do it, you know?
I think, well, do we want to have them here or can you guys, you want to be a part of that discussion or just have them come for next council and?
Either way, whatever, whatever works, I guess. If they could show up for a council meeting, it'd be great.
It'd probably be better because then you guys can make it.
Yeah.
So we'll set.
Be after 2:30.
Right. Do you copy that, Jill? She's still on?
If you could repeat just the, did you give me a date time? I heard it's 2:30, right?
No, we're, we're going to table the parcel lot 17 proposal with the dental office till next council and see if we can't get them to come and talk at a work session.
Okay. I will read out to them and then come back up.
Perfect. Do I have a motion to table?
Both.
Moved by Councilor Pulis.
I'll support it.
Supported by Councilor Skinsich to table parcel lot 17 proposal with the dental office. Any further discussion?
Do we have to also make a motion to set up a meeting with them, workshop? Or is that part of this motion?
Brad?
Do we have to have a motion to set up a meeting and ask them to come to work session?
No, I mean, theoretically, the mayor can set meetings.
Okay, right.
Especially if we just have to know it.
Yeah. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. None motion carries, four to zero. A is tabled. Approved plumbing, change order number one.
I don't know if there's any questions, there's a time extension change order. When we bid the project, we had a November 1 completion date and with the delay of the IRRB and not the delay of the timing of the IRRB and everything else, they're going to be started, so we extended the completion date to June 15 of 2024, so we'll be done next spring. We're just changing the date in the contract.
I'll move.
Moved by Councilor Pulis.
I'll support it.
Supported by Councilor Skinsich. Any further discussion?
I do have one question for you, Joe. Do they have to go all the way across? Are they going right across Summit Street there?
Yes, it's. Running the sewer up on the north side of Highway 135, so we're starting at the alley at Summit Street on the. at Summit Street, on the alley about a half a block to the east, that's the manhole we're tying into, so we start from there and go all the way up, so.
All right. I was hoping it was on the other side of the street.
Yeah.
All right, that's all I have, thanks.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. None motion carries, four to zero. Paychecks flex time for C. System upgrade will include our time recording system into an electronic system. It will include time in attendance plus time off management. This is, Jill, are you able to explain or how are you feeling?
Yeah, I can, thank you, Mayor. So it really is more of a digital platform to help us put in some of those controls that we need when we're doing payroll and time attendance, bring us into the 24/3. We've been looking at this for over a year and really with approval, it's gonna take only about six weeks, so I'm excited to shoot for it not to begin before the first of the year, to start the new year with new program, but I think it's a really good fit for us. Again, like I said, it's gonna help, you know, we have our maximum rollovers of vacation, comp time, things like that. The system will start verifying if those caps are put in place and they're not exceeded, where right now we're doing all of that administratively and while we're trying to be more efficient in the offices, people, less people, we need some electronics to help us to put that down, go efficiently, so we're not doing it by hand. So that's kind of one of these things that I'll do. In addition to that, we've got some caviar, if we chose where people would be logged in, we'd see where we logged in, things like that. If not followed in for the day, which is really be a safety issue, if something catastrophic happened, who's where, who logged in where, who's what for the day, so put some of those safety features in place as well. I think a while back, I sent you a video of this, I don't know if anybody's had a chance to look at it. I do love looks at time cards with me every, every few weeks and, you know, handwriting is extremely difficult to, to read. I'm constantly chasing down individuals to recalculate their time cards or fix them. You know, that's time that I'm chasing that down instead of me doing the administrative, other administrative functions, so I'm trying to make things more efficient is where this
Mayor?
Yes?
Jill, this is a total of 500 for the whole year? That's all next year then?
That would be a $1,500 fee for this stuff and then it's an additional to what we currently pay $125 a month. And I do believe if you take into account all of the paper copies, all of the time card cards, all of that additional stuff, it's kind of a wash because we're treating one for the other. I know there's a period time for it, has to chase people down to get their time card and on time because they go on vacation, so that would eliminate that as well because they could be submitting them to their supervisor electronically. Do you approve of that, will they come and work to us? Again, it's gonna be a change, it's gonna take some time. You can certainly, I can sit down with each department head, they can look at it and see, you know, but this is just something that would really help us in the office, especially with the turnover now, we've had recent.
And how would they be logging in as far as computers, phones?
They have the choice of an app on their phone or a computer and they can do it either
I'll move.
One second.
Moved by Counselor Pulis, supported by Counselor Potenin to the upgrade in with the paychecks flex time, with the price quote of $500, with the monthly fee of $125. Any further discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I just, I think this is a good move towards what we're trying to do with the city now, so I think it's a good way to go.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Joe.
Yep.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. No, sale of property access. Do we have that information in here, Jill?
I can't see it.
I don't have it.
Or was that just for?
My understanding, Mayor, is that we need to send a, and Jill, correct me if I misstate this, we need to send a letter to the school requesting access across certain properties?
Yeah, we were asking.
That's my understanding, right.
But we were.
The school needs the letter.
Right, but we were looking at acquiring that property right at the parking lot corner, right, Sam, going up?
The corner up here.
I believe so, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
We're looking at getting an easement for that property.
Looking to buy it.
Easement or buy it, because I thought at one of our discussions was for a dollar.
I think it was started as an easement at first.
And then the school looked at.
We were looking at buying it for a dollar, yes.
Yeah.
And are we, the access that we're looking for is over, as I understand it, is over an existing access road or trail?
Parking lot.
A parking lot?
Yeah, there's a parking lot.
Not all of it, no, Brian. There's a little bit that goes into the woods, but most of, let's say just 90, 90% of it is, is going over existing access. There's a little bit that goes up into the woods that we would retain or we would purchase also for, for the easement.
Yeah, because they've been wanting to get up there to start building their property.
Is this, is the city looking to acquire more than just the easement or we're just looking to acquire the, what was originally planned to be the easement, the access easement across?
Just the access easement.
Yeah, just that access easement, yeah.
Sorry, there's two access easements, so.
There and then one on the.
One on the Wisconsin.
North side.
And also on New Jersey.
Yeah.
I know John drew up the, the legal descriptions and had a.
Yeah, all on both or all on?
Yes.
Yeah.
This is the Nebraska one or the New Jersey one?
Yeah, yeah, New Jersey and the one up on Wisconsin.
Yes, we created the legal descriptions for those, so if you intend to acquire it, but you wanna.
If you could just shoot me those legos, I'll take care of the rest.
Yeah, because they've been wanting to get up there and.
Yeah, I know. Terry was just thinking some policy, they were waiting for it.
Well, so we need a motion for you to follow up on that or is?
Correct. I understand that the motion is, would be direct to me to send a letter to acquire the legal descriptions I'll get from John.
I'll move.
Moved by Counselor Pulis.
I'll support it.
Supported by Counselor Skinsich to have City Attorney Lindsey send a letter inquiring about the sale of property access.
You would be sending that to the school, correct?
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. None motion carries, four to zero. Law enforcement risk assessment pilot program, Chief Teacher.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I believe I provided you with a fairly detailed outline of what this entails. Last year, the League of Minnesota City's Insurance Trust started to do a study on police liability, both from the use of force along with workers' compensation. When they did the 10-year look back, we surprisingly qualified, we were a top 30 agency in the state of Minnesota. This includes agencies with one police officer, agencies as high as 180 officers. And they found that we had one of the lowest police liability claims in the state, top 30. How that happened, I don't know. Like I say, it's more luck than anything else and I think give a lot of credit to my employees. If you look at the police liability claims, these are generally like, generally it's basically your use of force, any type of illegal computer activity on our squad vehicle, stuff like that. If you look at, we had a total of five claims, but keep in mind, the big one was when I first took over as chief, that was a use of force incident on differing point. It was actually, I'll just say it was a bogus complaint, but we ended up having defended it in federal court and we did prevail. I act after that point, we enacted body cameras, so basically implemented body cameras five, six years before most agencies did, so we kinda got ahead of the curve on that. And if you look at the 2013 claim and the 2016 claim, those were class action lawsuits against every law enforcement agency in the state of Minnesota and they basically, whatever the costs were, they divided it per officer and we were responsible for $2,481 of it, when the fact was it was probably a $2 or $3 million lawsuit that was defended. So, so we sat pretty good there, we made changes. In regards to the workman's comp claims, you'll see there's 28 total claims over the past 10 years. Keep in mind, the big one there was a $49,000 claim in 2013. We have since changed our policy in regards to how we handle things. An obese female was stuck between a toilet, a wall and a heater and was burning and the officer was trying to pull her out and tore his rotator cuff. We've changed that policy now where if it's something that's immediate, well, if we have to be up at 2:00 in the morning, so can the fire department. So now we have a, a deal where rather than one guy trying to pick up somebody stuck between a toilet, it's nicer to have some help. So we just, we'll just page out the fire department if both PD or St. Louis County Sheriff's Department isn't close. So that's just some processes and you can see we haven't had anything. If you look at all those other ones, they're all pretty small, $1,600 ones. Most of those are dog bites. The $2,558 one was an incident where a male had stabbed himself several times. The officer had blood and pretty much had to toe from wrestling with him and the male tested positive hepatitis C, so that was a series of several tests to make sure that the officer did not contract hepatitis C. And the other ones are generally dog bites. Officers ended up at the hospital to either get a stitch or just get checked out for dog bites. And the other one was for an officer involved shooting where one of our officers was involved in a shooting and they were taken to the hospital for a blood draw and then just evaluation. The last thing is the auto claims. If you look at the claims, the two big claims were basically high-speed pursuits. The last one in 2022 involved a vehicle, stolen vehicle out of Biwabik coming to Gilbert. The officer attempted to stop, stick himself, the guy ended up taking himself head on, $15,000 to our truck. But we are getting restitution now at $50, I think it's $25 a month for the next 38 years, so we will hopefully collect on that at some point from the individual. The rest were mostly deer hits, that's generally what it was, but two were high-speed pursuits. I shouldn't say high speed, but they were vehicle pursuits. So obviously, the League of Minnesota City's, we're really trying to get away from pursuits. Generally, we've been, we don't have many pursuits. All the officers except for two are trained in the pit maneuvers, now we're able to usually wreck them out fairly quickly before we really get up to the speed, so. And again, we probably average two or three pursuits a year and most, we've been very fortunate, have not, and it resulted in any major damage. I give the officers credit that if it's the middle of the day, they'll just continue the pursuit, they're just not gonna push it, so. So I give them credit for that. The reason why I bring this up is, is obviously there was some money put aside, I believe we're getting right around 70 some thousand dollars in regards that the state put aside for police and fire for, for just about anything, mental health, physical health and stuff like that. One of the reasons why I think our, our workman's comp claims are down, we don't have a lot of slip and falls, we don't have a lot of injuries, we're fighting with people. One of the reasons is, I'll be honest with you, we have two officers that hold state bench press records, one holds two national records. I've got lots of strength in my department, but I have no speed, so if we actually catch you, we have you, but up to that point, we're probably not gonna catch you, so. But with, but with that, with the strength train, it just shows that our officers aren't getting hurt lifting people up. And that's generally what we're doing, where we're picking up invalids all the time that fall off the toilet or fall outside and we, we help them out. So that's usually where a lot of your injuries occur, is usually doing lifting or fighting. The officers generally make good decisions. I feel that, you know, the one thing that they found with this, with this study was, I was one of three other agencies that really had not a lot of policies and they really wanna be policy driven and we kinda went against the grain as far as what works. We have a lot less policies than a lot of other agencies, but I think that being in a small town, you know, the officers we hire, we expect them to have fairly decent common sense and my expectation, my officers, is that you treat these people like you wanna be treated or you want your family to be treated. And if you go that way with it, generally things are gonna work out and I think that's prevented a lot of things from, from occurring. So I give the officers a lot of credit, certainly because of my leadership, because if you guys know me, I'm kind of a fly by the seat of my pants, but fortunately, we have very good officers that I think are, they may not be the best street officers, they may not be the worst street officers, but they're good people and I think that they have, the most important thing is I think they have compassion for the people of these communities and compassion for the job and I think that that really shows a lot of this stuff. So with that, I'll roll into the whole reason why I put this whole thing together was generally we allow our officers to work out one hour a day, our one-hour shift before, after, even during, if there's two officers working, one car in each city. Most agencies are now going to that. We started that about six, seven years ago and I think when you look at the claims and stuff like that, we've kept them very low. We generally pay about $600 a year to the East Range Fitness, that is, which is over in Biwabik. It's a really good deal, but it's not necessarily conducive for when our officers go because if it's busy or, or whatever else, the officer doesn't have really place to secure their stuff when they're there. So I'm requesting that, when that money, we're supposed to receive that $73,000. I'm just asking that, you look at this stuff and when I bring this up, this isn't just for the police department, this is for the fire department. Every citizen, every city employee would have access to this facility. During their lunch breaks, whatever else, they can, they can use the treadmills or whatever else, the treadmill or there'll be an exercise bike or elliptical of some sort. But I'm asking for council approval of that $10,000 and Representative Leslegard had asked, actually asked me if I've used, what I'm looking at using that money for and I brought up that, well, because the fear from the state is that they're gonna burn it on money to pay other bills and it's just not gonna be used for us for. And I said, well, part of it is gonna be for the mental health and physical well-being of not only our officers, but of the fire department, which that money is also geared for, but then also city employees will have access to it too. You know, which if they wanna go for a walk or whatever else and things are stressful, they can go in there in the winter. So I'm asking for, and again, I haven't met with the fire chief yet to decide, to see if there's anything that they want specific, but basically I'm asking for to spend up $10,000 of that money that we have not received yet, they're supposed to, I believe we're supposed to receive it December 26th, that $10,000, up to $10,000 and I'm trying to get some donations from some, some matting and stuff like that. If we can prevent that, that's a couple thousand dollars, but I don't wanna exceed $10,000 for some weight sets. You know, the problem is I've got one officer, I think benches 485 pounds, so a 300-pound set just isn't enough, so he can lift all that with, you know, on his back, so. And I do have two officers, I think deadlifting over 500 pounds, so we do have to have a little bit more weight for those guys. I don't have that problem, so, but a couple of my officers do, so I would just ask that, you know, I think I wanna keep this trend. If you've noticed, my first year as chief, I've got some high liability things, if you look past that, we've kinda gotten some things in hand and a couple of things have kinda been out of our control too, so. So yeah, I would just ask that the council would entertain that. Like I said, I won't be purchasing until we actually have that money in hand, but that I feel is a good use of that money. We've always talked about some type of fitness thing. I believe there's also a grant that we received, I don't know if we've spent it yet, for, I think it was up to $600 or $1,000, I think, I don't know if the, if the union had gotten that money or who got that money, but that money was available and we just never really used it and I think we can kinda put that in. And the biggest thing is, you know, when that officer got hurt, tearing his rotator cuff, you know, we paid $15,000 in overtime to cover his shifts for that four months, so. I, I think that, I've always said that if we can prevent this stuff from happening, it's gonna save us in the long run, even if it costs a little bit in the front, I think in the backside, it has. And the other thing, if you noticed, in 2013, I started a fitness challenge and by doing that six-month fitness challenge, our sick days went down, I think it was, I'll have to look, it was 11 or 12, I believe, and that right there saved a lot of money to this community. So my officer's trying to get a little bit older, you know, there's more propensity for. propensity for, uh, for injury, and, um, I'm kinda living proof of it, where I've kinda been going through a few things as I grow older, so. So that's the idea. Unfortunately, our job can be physical at times, it's not necessarily we're fighting with people every day, um, but I can tell you with the mental health stuff that's going on, we are finding ourselves in more altercations, uh, with more people, and in the job, I don't wanna say it's getting more dangerous, it's just, it's, it's changed. And rather than fighting with drunks and bars, now we're fighting with mental health or people, uh, paranoid on meth. So, it's kinda changed for us, so.
I'll move. I don't need to hear no more, that's, I mean, Ty does an awesome job, and I'm pretty sure everyone at this table thinks the same.
No, I would agree. It's, it's better to be proactive than reactive, and to get a grip on it, which I concur with him, that, that we have a very stout police department, and to keep them in shape and to keep up with the times, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, we had nobody in track, not one person in my-
I was. I was your Speedy, I was Speedy Gonzalez.
Yeah. Yeah, so we, uh, but, uh, the strength is important. Like I said, our officers are able, it's, you know, as, people are able, they're able to pick up more, they're moved, to move more, and it really helps the citizens, you know, I mean, it's, it's pretty, it's nice when, uh, you know, even like, we tried to carry out, if we had a deceased male, that was 425 pounds in the basement, and, uh, I can tell you this, I didn't do much of the carrying, but the two other guys moved it pretty well. And unfortunately, I mean, it's somebody like, if there's two or three of me, we, one of us probably would've pulled something or gotten hurt, you know, so. So I think the strength is very important to win our jobs, so.
I just have a question. Where would you put the equipment?
We would look at putting it down in the community center, in, in one of the rooms down there where the water meter's at. We wouldn't need a whole lot.
So you know, you know where you'd put it, or where I would recommend? Right when you come into, across from the library, that room to the left, all it is is furniture.
Oh, the old boardroom?
That would be the ideal spot.
Okay, yeah, we can look at that, yeah, we can look at that. Yep, we can look at something like that, so.
And, and I don't know if you ever thought of this, but, yeah, it's fine for the employees, but, you know, how about the citizens, you know, taking into consideration too? I'm not saying that we started a fitness club there, but, I mean, that's just, you know, what I thought of it too. Why are we leaving out the citizens and we're just with the employee? But, I'm fine with just staying that way, but it was just-
That would take a lot of discussion as far as liability.
I know, it would, I know it would, but maybe to start with, use that room, and later on, maybe you could-
Well, and we can look at how, how often-
Citizens of the town use it.
We'll look at how often it occurs, but I'm, I'm really hoping, at least within my department, and hoping with fire department, even employees, you know, when they're on their lunch break, they go and, they wanna walk or whatever, uh, the idea is to make them healthier, hopefully we can keep our health insurance down, everything down, even for the city crew, you know, I mean, they're, they're doing hefty lifting and everything else, if they go and they lift a little bit, every little bit helps, and hopefully they can, uh, utilize that too, so. But, we'll see how it works out, it, uh, maybe, maybe it doesn't work out, but I'm, I'm hoping, so.
One thing we gained, that room just needs some cleaning, so. You kill two birds with one stone, if you moved into there.
Okay, we'll look at that, so.
So I have a motion, Counselor Polis. I'll second. Supported by Counselor Potenin. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pollis, say nay. None motion carries, thank you, Ty, Chief. Employee 360 summary. No, do we have, need a motion to accept it?
Uh, we don't need a formal motion to accept the summary. Uh, it has been provided, so each of the council members can review it.
Thank you. And then... For the campground hose contract approval, we can accept that. She agreed to the terms last, so.
That we put out there?
Yep, our counter offer, so we can just approve it.
I'll second.
Moved by Counselor Polis, supported by Counselor Skjendic to approve the campground hose contract approval for the one year for 2024. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pollis, say nay. None motion carries, four to zero.
Just a question on that. Are all these, once we approve these contracts, are they gonna be posted online on our city?
I know-
So all citizens can view it? Is that from the contract? I know some cities have every contract on their websites.
Yeah, um, and I'm just, and I, I apologize, what I'm doing is thinking about the terms of the contract, whether there's anything included there that may be non-public data that may need to be redacted out.
That's what I was curious about.
I, I think there, there's some cities that post the majority of their contracts. Obviously, employment contracts are subject to the, the data requests, uh, the public data, the Minnesota Data Practices Act, so anybody could come in and make a request, and then we would review that request, redact any non-public information, and disclose the public information. They're always available.
You, you couldn't do that beforehand and then just post everybody's contract online?
Do you remember anything you could?
I'd like to see that. I, I'd like the citizens to know about our contracts, that, for transparency reasons.
Yeah, and I thought there was some that we could access, but then there was some that didn't have posted, so, yeah, that's something with the internet, if it ever, or, city website, if it works.
If it gets to where it should be.
We can get, yeah. Cause I'd like to have it there too, so if anybody has questions, they can look.
Yes.
And see. I, I agree with total transparency. Okay. Then, next is a closed session to discuss, uh, I guess, labor contract or-
Mayor, the, uh, the closed session, I, what I understand is that the basis of the closed session is to develop essentially negotiating positions as it relates to employment contracts within the city.
Correct. So we'll go into closed session at 7:452, or?
Technically, we'd need a motion to recess the regular meeting.
Yeah.
Joined in a closed session.
Yeah, I'll move. Moved by Counselor Polis.
I'll support.
Supported by Counselor Skjendic to move into, to close, move into a recession for closed meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pollis, say nay. None. All right, I'll get it straight. All right. We'll reconvene our regular agenda council meeting.
I'll move.
Roll call. Counselor Potenin.
Here.
Mayor Smith. Here. Counselor Polis.
Here.
Counselor Skjendic.
Here.
Also present, Attorney Lindsey. See, I can do it. Okay. So now, action from the closed session. Do I have a motion to move and direct Attorney Lindsey to further collect information in order to finalize our-
Counter proposal.
Counter proposal.
Move.
Moved by Counselor Polis.
I'll second.
Supported by Counselor Potenin. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pollis, say nay. None motion carries, four to zero. Any miscellaneous announcements? Excellent.
Calendar parking starts soon.
Yeah, remind people, it's November 1st, calendar parking. Please abide, get used to changeover. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Counselor Polis.
Support.
Supported by Counselor Skjendic. You guys wanna discuss that?
No.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Pollis, say nay. None motion carries, four to zero, meeting adjourned.